And we are now recording.
All right. Thanks, Katie. Katie, can you please start us off with roll call?
Yes. Mr. Badger?
Here.
Mr. Bleefeld?
I'm here.
Mr. Frank?
Here.
Mrs. Ginsburg?
Here.
Mrs. Hayman?
Here.
Ms. Karen Iguis?
Here.
Mr. Stoloff?
Yep.
Mrs. Walsh? Mr. Antonio?
Here.
And Morgan Wilson?
Here.
Paige Benning?
Here.
Eight present and one absent and two student board reps tonight.
Thank you. It's time for the Pledge of Allegiance. Katie, can you do the honors with the flag? And please say with me, I pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America. And to the Republic. Where we stand. One nation.
One nation. Under God. Indivisible. Liberty. Justice.
Well, I'd like to welcome everyone to the March 22nd, 2021 work session of the Wissickin School District's Board of Directors. And tonight, we have some important updates to share and discuss as a follow-up to our special board meeting on March 16th. And in addition, there are a few action items that we need to vote on tonight because they are time sensitive and can't wait until our next week's meeting. And we'll hear more about these items later. Item two on our agenda is a list of meetings earlier this month, while item three is a list of upcoming meetings through April. And for presentations, we're going to start off first with WHS highlights from our student board reps. Paige and Morgan?
All right. I'll start us off. This is a big one. We've got a lot of news this month. So first, I want to start off with some news about Mini-Thon. For those who may not know, either on the board or at home, Mini-Thon is an event. It's a dance-a-thon that we do here at Wissickin where we raise money for pediatric cancer through the Four Diamonds Fund. And I believe I mentioned it last update, but we are having an in-person event this year. It's going to be in later April. And being that we are coming into, you know, the home stretch right before our final donation goal, we did a teacher competition. So we had teachers kind of pit themselves against each other to raise money. And those who completed their goal had to do certain tasks. So Mr. Ford and Mr. McDaniels ate dog food. Mr. Morris and Mr. Mog gave away a gift card. Mr. and Mrs. Pearlman made guest appearances in their Hulk and Wonder Woman costumes. Mr. Crofton and Ms. Woodland Smith jumped in the pool in clown costumes. Mr. Happy, Mr. Shoemaker and Mrs. Moore had a belly flop in competition. Mr. Stokes, Mrs. Hall and Mrs. Founds jumped into the pool fully clothed. And Mr. Byer had shaved his head. And so all of this was streamed via Teams for the first office hour and through YouTube for the second office hour. And we were able to raise $3,000 through the teachers alone. So we wanted to give the teachers and everyone who donated a big thank you. So this is near and dear to my heart. We have some announcements about the senior class and some of the events that are taking place now. So on May 3rd, we are doing a senior-only day where seniors have to, they would have to sign up, but it is going to be an in-person day of school where all seniors get to attend. And I'm personally really excited about it. And so it's going to be kind of like a recollection of, you know, bringing everyone together and kind of our send-off. And then, as we all know, we are, or may or may not know, we are actually having an in-person graduation, which to me personally is really exciting. That's something I'm really looking forward to, as well as an in-person senior awards night and scholarship night. And then, one of the last things I wanted to talk about was the musical. The musical that we had typically, you know, Wissickin is very well-known for hosting very elaborate musicals, and I personally love to attend them. Last year was Mamma Mia. Such, so good. But this year, they actually put on the musical. It was called Working. And they did it completely from home. So all these students from across the high school actually filmed themselves singing, dancing, and it was put together and streamed over the course of, I believe it was a week, all for free. And it was all just to kind of raise awareness for our musical theater program, and it had great reviews. I saw it myself. It was amazing. So definitely, I want to recommend to anyone to check out our musical theater program. Morgan?
So I'm very excited to like announce that the juniors will be having a prom. It's a Friday, May 7th, and it's going to be hosted at the Fugee in Wormsor, PA. It's going to be from 6:00 to 10:00, and the tickets cost 85 for Wissickin students and then 90 for outside guests. Tickets will go on sale Monday, April 5th until Friday, April 16th. We will be using MySchoolBox for ticket sales. And the survey will be coming out next week to decide on a theme. So look forward to that. And then, spring sports have like started up last week. And so I know boys lacrosse had a scrimmage on Saturday and they won. And then, boys baseball had a scrimmage today and they won as well. So I just want to wish good luck to all the spring sports coming up.
All right. Great. Thanks, Paige and Morgan. Questions or comments for Paige or Morgan? I just want to make a comment about the high school musical. I saw it with my family, and I was amazed at actually the editing job of taking all the, I guess, the remote Zoom performances and then splicing them all together. There were a lot of like multi-person numbers and performances, and it was pretty impressive. They even put a few things like with some swirling windows and other things like that, which was, yeah, it was very cool and very, very of the moment, given the pandemic that we're in. So that was great. And congratulations on the amount raised for Mini-Thon. That's, I wish I had seen some of those teacher, what'd you call those, performances?
But I believe the one on YouTube still is up, so I can send you the link if you want to see some teachers jumping into the pool. I'm not sure if the first Teams call where they ate dog food was recorded, but that was an interesting one.
They may have tried to destroy any video evidence of any of those things, but if there is a link, please share.
Like cereal, Mr. Ford.
All right. Great. Again, thanks, Paige and Morgan, for that great update on things happening with Wissickin High School. I'm excited to hear about some of the end-of-year plans and activities that are coming up. And I know we're going to get a more in-depth update on that from Jim later this evening as well. So with that, I'm going to hand things off to Jim for our next presentation, which is an update on grade 6 to 12, fourth marking period instructional program options.
Okay. Thank you. Shane, I'm going to share my screen here in a second. I'm still trying to get past either the visual or just the thought of some of my staff members eating dog food. That's a hard one for me to do, but I'm going to make it. I think I can make it through the night. Everybody see the screen like that?
No.
What about that? Is that working?
No.
Yeah? Let's see here. Screen one, screen two. How about that? Is that working?
Yep.
Okay, good. Okay, so tonight, we've got what I'm calling is part two of the conversation that we began on Tuesday regarding instructional program plan for the balance of the school year. So tonight, we'll continue that. We'll share some survey results from the survey that was conducted over the last four or five days. We'll discuss some new guidance that came out from CDC regarding distancing. And then we'll go over a revised recommendation that I'm going to present to everyone tonight. And there's a later, a motion to vote on it so we can get all the wheels, necessary wheels turning, but that's a little bit later. So here are the survey results first. So what we did, this slide is just the baseline of where we were in the third marking period. And then, where families told us they would like to be starting the fourth marking period before we decided to make any change to anything. So as you recall, every marking period, we ask families, hey, do you want to change your status or you want to stay where you are? And there was some changes. So for example, here's in middle school. And marking period three, we had this breakdown of hybrid and virtual students. Roughly 60, 40%. Now, please understand that we're not, we, these numbers aren't going to add up to all of the students in the school. Sometimes there are students who are not in here because in the high school's case, they might be tech school students. They have a totally different schedule. Sometimes there are students who have a different program and they're in every day because they go to a different room or something. So these are, these are the basics. Don't worry if the numbers don't add up exactly the way everyone thinks that there have many students there are. This is, this is the concept. And then after the initial survey, remember, this is not the one that closed today. This is just the one that schools sent out, hey, you want to make any changes from fourth marking period? You could see there was a slight uptick from 61 to 67 who wanted to go, what the option was, as far as they knew at that point, the hybrid option. And then here's the same information for the high school. So as we spoke last meeting, there's not nearly as many students at the high school at the end of marking period three who were present or wanted to be in person every day. And like middle school, though, that was a little bit of uptick. It was going to be about 60, 40 before all things changed in the last seven days. Okay. So this is, this slide will show you the results of the recently conducted survey that closed today at noon. It's scrambling to get this together. And you recall, this was the one was, was non-committing in any fashion. But if we, if we change to it every day, five-day in-person option and therefore reduce six feet of distancing, what would you like to do? And here are the results. Once again, please understand the numbers don't necessarily add up because not everybody responded. But a pretty good response rate, 81%. And you either were virtual, these first three lines, first three rows, you were, your status was virtual and you want to either stay virtual or you want to switch to hybrid or you want to switch to five-day in-person. And so we got those, that information. And the same, if you're currently hybrid, you want to stay that way. You want to switch to virtual, which a few did, or you want to switch to five-day, which you can see was popular. Okay, so this would have been the main thrust of tonight's conversation, except for that something has changed.
Jim, Jim, before you get into this revised CDC guidelines, could you go back to the survey results, please?
Okay.
It's kind of hard to tell just looking at a table of numbers, but like what are, what insights did you draw from these numbers? What is this, what are the numbers, what are the takeaways here?
Well, I'm looking at them now. We have, I think there's, conceptually, there's more people interested in going in person in the spring. And, and maybe that's for five days, maybe because it's warmer. We don't know. But I think the takeaway is that there would be more people in the building in the spring. That's where these rows, hybrid changing over. I don't see a whole lot of necessarily anything else jumping out at me on these. Anybody else?
I mean, I, I tried to just calculate some percentages just right before this meeting based on this, on some of the table data. And what it looks like overall is that if we were to offer five-day in-person as an option by relaxing the six feet, overall, there would be a higher percentage, it looks like at least a marginally higher percentage of students who would be coming into the building for some form of in-person, either hybrid or five days versus the previous survey results. So I mean, I thought that was, that was interesting, you know, to me, because I think one of the questions we as a board were trying to consider was how much interest is there in five-day in-person without six feet versus, versus hybrid? And also, how many people would, if we, if we switch things, would actually be forced or feel forced to switch from hybrid, dropping back down to virtual because of concerns or for whatever reasons? That doesn't seem like to be a very significant number. If you look at the line that says hybrid and switching to virtual, for example, so not, not a lot of students who are actually hybrid now would actually switch to virtual if we switch to five days without six feet. On the flip side, still significant numbers, and it looks like overall slightly more numbers at the middle school and definitely more at the high school would actually want to come in in person, some form of in-person, either hybrid or in-person, if we switch to this model. So I thought that was, that was kind of interesting overall. Again, it's hard to tell when you just look at a table of numbers, but if you calculate some things that broke some things down to percentages, you could see it more clearly.
Okay. So now we have these revised CDC guidelines, which hit the press on Friday when they released them, which was exceedingly inconvenient considering we had our meeting on Tuesday, and now we have our meeting today. So at least they had the decency to actually publish these things before this night's meeting and not tomorrow. That would have been even worse. Anyway, we've got, we've got them now in-house and we understand what they say. And their new recommendations are to not recommend six feet. It kind of depends on the grade level or the age level of the students. Elementary students are three feet. CDC is okay with three feet. Also okay for three feet for older students, grade 6 to 12, presuming there's not a high transmission rate in the community. Community spread is not high. There are still some circumstances that require six feet, such as lunch. And also adults have to remain six feet distanced, but from student to student, it can go down to three. So further complicating matters is that while CDC has put this out, neither the state of Pennsylvania nor Montgomery County has officially adopted the revised guidelines. They both say they are in the process of adopting them. There's some, the word of the street is they will be adopted. I'm, I'm not getting any indication that they're going to be rejected or modified. That could happen. But being that it's basically one workday since they released these, it's, it's still slightly up in the air. What's Pennsylvania and Montgomery County going to do? So that brings me to the revised recommendations. You recall, we were recommending last meeting one thing, but it, it feels like the sand is shifting before we even get our feet on the ground. So we, Tuesday, we shared one recommendation. You recall, the common ground, stay the course for the rest of this school year, staying at six feet and then return to normal in the fall. A nice way to accommodate different people's take on the pandemic and requirements and things. Then, the distancing recommendation changed from health officials. It changed Friday. We just finished talking about it, CDC. Now, it's not officially adopted yet, but I feel like it's going to be. And I feel like we don't have a whole lot of time to wait around for Pennsylvania and Montgomery County to adopt it, especially when there's indications that they are going to adopt it. So this is what we've been struggling with since Friday, what to do now. New circumstances. So there's a new recommendation at K to five, only slightly different in K to five. Very limited changing opportunities for families for the balance of this school year. All the reasons still apply in terms of why it's not a good idea to change your, your teacher this far into a school year. The teacher-student relationship is the whole foundation of a good year of learning. And your classmates will be different. But we, we can stick with six feet whenever possible and always when required at lunch. Families will be asked if they want to change their student's placement, but this is going to be done on a small scale, school-by-school basis. And we can, we feel like if we have room in a classroom in terms of that now, we're, now that the limiter is not six feet, limiter is now three feet, so we probably have a lot more space. Now we might run into class size guidelines. And we're not going to put 35 students in a grade-two classroom. Probably not going to be that big of a deal at K to five because we don't anticipate that many families choosing to change the teacher-student relationship. And it's also important to note that all current virtual teachers are staying virtual with their current class rosters. So none of the virtual students will be impacted by any of this. If they want to stay virtual, they stay virtual with their current virtual teacher for the rest of the school year. If there are some who want to move back, then they will choose to change their teacher and they'll work with the principal to figure out how that can be done. And then, once again, in fall, it's a different story. I anticipate back to normal with some sort of virtual option. That's the same exact as we talked about on Tuesday. No change there. Here's where the big change takes place in grade 6 to 12. Recommending we move to a five-days-per-week construct for the balance of this school year. That's a major change. We stick with six feet, same thing. And if it's lunch, it has to be six feet. So lunch is going to be extremely challenging because we have to assign places to eat. Not just rooms, but literally places in the room for people. So we can do that. But we accept that reduced distancing in accordance with the CDC recommendation. Families will be asked if they want to change, starting April 12th, which is one week after we get back. We can't make it happen any faster than, than that. Choice will be five days a week in-person or hybrid. We, you can have the hybrid attendance pattern option. We can't offer it with six feet. So if you, if you were, if you, if somehow, for some reason, it works better for you to come in on blue goal or blue days or gold days, that's okay. But you have, everybody has to understand it's not going to be six feet anymore. So if that's a problem, then you, you have an option of choosing virtual if you'd like. And if you don't mind that, then you can go to five days. And again, the 100% virtual option will be retained exactly as it's offered now. So none of the virtual students will be adversely or impacted in any fashion. And also, no change from last meeting Tuesday. The fall will be different. We're going to try to do whatever we can to not have live streaming be the option. Live streaming from the classroom has compromised almost the whole operation, and there's good reasons for it. But it, it actually takes quite a bit away from the experience for everybody. But we're not going to talk about the fall tonight. So conclusion, this has been very difficult because personally, I actually believe it's worth sticking with six feet. For the next two months, I feel like the virus is not done doing damage. And I felt like we could probably do more to, to embrace the concept of common ground as being something we all seek and are okay with. We really need that more than ever, actually, in many ways these days. And I feel like the previously recommended plan was a reasonable common ground solution, which is why we, we talked about it, why it was recommended on Tuesday. However, as of last Friday, with the CDC news, everything has changed. And professionally, while I personally believe we should stick with six feet, professionally, I cannot recommend that. Something like that that goes against the advice, the guidance of the widely-accepted health experts, in this case, the CDC. Now, it's a little bit of a gamble because I suppose if Pennsylvania or Montgomery County reject the CDC guidance, then, then we've got a problem on our hands. But I, again, I don't think they're going to, and I don't think we have time to sit around and wait to see if they are going to or not. So as a result of all this, the recommended course of action for the balance of this school year has changed for grades 6 to 12. Now we are going to recommend a five-day option. We'll keep the hybrid option, but it's not going to be six feet anymore. And we'll have the 100% virtual option, of course. And all that's going to be on a blue sheet, which is a motion for tonight. It's later in the agenda. And I have to, a slight change in the blue sheet motions wording, but we'll get to that later. And then I also just recommend, one last thing, this is almost recommending slash begging. If we can please not talk about fall yet until we get 2021 nailed down. There is so much involved with all of this. This is all that the schools and central offices have been doing, basically, for a whole week. And rightfully so, because it's important. But we only have two eyes. We can't keep an eye on the fall right now. We'll get there. And we'll get there well in advance of fall. It's just not right now. So that's the, the presentation itself. I will go ahead and exit out of this screen share and then take any questions for the board members if you have some.
Anyone want to start? See a bunch of hands. I saw Ron first, then Paige.
Okay. Am I clear in that understanding that there is a choice or there was a choice up until the CDC came out with their outline? Recommendations that you have in-school, hybrid and virtual as a third choice?
I'm sorry, Ron. I'm not understanding the question.
Yeah, part of, part of, because I didn't understand. What are your choices was that there be full-time in for the 6 to 12, 100% virtual and hybrid? Is that true? That there were three choices?
Yes, with the, with the understanding that hybrid is no longer at six feet. The hybrid really is about the attendance pattern of coming in on blue or gold days. But it's not what we had because it's not six feet of distancing. So you, it's really about attendance pattern now. It's you could, you could choose to attend every day or you could choose to attend on blue or gold days, depending on which one you're assigned. Or you could choose 100% virtual. So there are three choices with a, with a, with a hybrid, not quite the same as it was, but tennis-wise, it's the same.
But has anyone talked to the teachers about this? Because I could see a a kid will, will have a choice of coming in or not. And the kind of chaotic classroom scene with seating, role-taking, and just the teacher trying to keep their head on straight as to.
We, you're right. Good observation. It's going to be very, very, let's say, complex. Attendance is going to be complex, but the truth of the matter is, it already is now. We have hybrid now, but if somebody calls in now and, and says that Johnny can't make it in today, now the teacher has to ascertain it. So Johnny's not present when he's supposed to be. But if he's on the screen, because, and he got permission to be on the screen, then that's actually attending. So that's hard enough as it is now. And we're going to have the same issue where we need to, we need to ascertain a student's whereabouts. That's the key. And if they're supposed to be in front of us today, me, let's say, me as a teacher, if they're supposed to be in front of me and I see them there. If they're supposed to be with me today and they're not normally, in a normal year, that's absent and off we go. Now there's an interim step, though. You got to take a look at the screen and see if they're on the screen, which is what we have to do now anyway. We've been doing that for about five months now. It's, it's onerous. It does take time. It's really hyper-important because if something happens, like a fire drill or something, we need to know who was present that day, like physically present. And we have to make the distinction between being physically present and being virtually present. But we've been doing that, like I say, for five months anyway.
Paige? And then Marshall.
All right. So one of my biggest questions is how. Changing is going to work. That's the best way I can put it because I know now kids that are hybrid can go virtual, but kids that are virtual cannot go hybrid. Are we thinking that kids that are five days have the option to change to hybrid if that makes them more comfortable? I was just wondering if that had been thought through at all.
Yeah, the answer is yes. Though without, not a whole lot of hours or minutes to think through it, but yes. And the answer is we, our, our vision would be if the board approves this recommendation tonight, we take the rest of this week. To see what families would like, starting in April twelfth. And so then you would choose either five days a week attendance pattern. Or hybrid attendance pattern. Or a hundred percent virtual. And if somebody chooses five days a week. And in a month's time, they are, start not feeling well or just not feeling comfortable. They can do exactly what they do now. Which is to call in and with parent permission. Not attend that day, but actually attend virtually. You can't just do that. Students can't do that by their own choosing. They need to have parent permission to do that on a given day. Because again, we need to know, make sure that. It's okay for Johnny to be virtual rather than say off somewhere else. But moving forward, yes, there will be fluidity and the big difference between six to twelve and K to five is. It's the same teacher in the same class. That's what gives us this tremendous amount of flexibility. Albeit as. Complicated and awkward and a pain in the neck, as Ron pointed out, in term for teachers of tenants taking. And there's some other things involved too, like. I'm not going to go into details, but the specter of trying to figure out who's going to be at what lunch on a given day is going to be crazy. So I don't want to minimize that. But we can, we can make it work. And. And students will have that flexibility. As long as the parents sign up on it.
So. If a kid said, oh. Sorry. For example, if I was five days a week. And I no longer felt comfortable, could I? Go through the school and officially change to go hybrid without having a parent need, needing to call me in? Or call me out sick?
It would, it would depend on the circumstance. If someone's going to, in your example, like. Do that for the rest of the school year, we had ten days left. No, we're not going to, it takes a fair amount to, to. Process all that through our information system. But if there's enough time left and it makes sense and, and it would save a call every other day or whatever, yeah, we can, schools can work with families that way.
Okay, thank you.
Marshall?
Yeah, Jim, obviously, a lot of the. The information that we took from the year was that we've had a pretty good year. There has not been a lot of cases ongoing in the schools. And because of that, in the last week, we had a meeting. We then had a survey, we had CDC guidelines, and then we shut down Lower Gwinnett because of the uptick in cases. So I have a couple of questions in that regard. Number one, it's the same one I asked you the other day. First and foremost. To whatever extent you know, how are those kids doing? Number one. And number two. What are we going to do in order to learn from that particular scenario? Because we have kept the numbers low across the board to ensure that we continue to do so with the recommendation you're now making.
Yeah, okay, good question. First, the, the students involved and also the staff. I can't speak for them because I'm sure they feel kind of crummy in some circumstances and maybe even worse, but. It see, I mean, and I can't divulge, you know, specifics, but it appears that everybody is, is okay. I mean, it's scary to get a positive test for sure. What we've learned is that even. In a circumstance, say, in, in this case, Lower Gwinnett, where. That school, like all of other elementary school, have been operating for seven months. Without an incident, doing the same exact things they've been doing. What we've learned is, even with the best masking attention, the best hygiene. Practices. The, the best. Adherence to distancing. The best cleaning and disinfecting. You can still have an outbreak. Nobody did anything differently. In that school or in that classroom than they had been doing for seven months. Which, which does. Frankly, that weighs on me because that's sort of where I was going with, I'd rather just stick this out for six feet personally. But apparently the CDC has a different take and I'm not going to, to buck the CDC. So we'll, we'll move to three feet, but your point is well taken. I mean, it's out there.
David?
Thanks, Joe. The CDC's new guidelines also include the caveat that if. The community transmission incidence goes to what they call high. Which is greater than a hundred cases per hundred thousand residents per week. That's the same as Pennsylvania's substantial. And by my calculations, we're either at or slightly above that number now. If we go above that and it's decided that we have to make a shift because of that. Then will the, the, I guess the, the middle school students. Their pod structure would allow them to still stay at the three feet distance. But the high school students, since they don't have that cohort. Model. If they're changing classes and intermixing. As they do change classes. Would they then have to go? To fully virtual or would they go to hybrid? How would that play out?
So first, let me just clarify that middle school wouldn't be able to do anything differently than the high school. They, they are teams, but they're not sufficiently cohort of the way that CDC. Designs that in their mind. Students change classes, they have different schedules based on their elected, you know, whatever they wanted to take. So. In either case, middle and high school, we'd have a problem on our hands if the county, if the community transmission rates spike up again. Again, this is, this is so much better than K to five, though, because we wouldn't have to change any courses or teachers. We just have to change attendance patterns. And that change might be back to a hybrid or might be back to a hundred percent virtual, depending on how bad the spike is. We, we, this is why we're trying so hard to limit this at K to five because to return. K to five, well, it's a little different, but it, it's because there's different teachers, different models. So let's keep it at six to twelve. And the answer is if the, the rate spike. We can pivot and go to one of the other attendance patterns. It's in a sense, we're just adding attendance pattern here. Choice and we're recognizing it's less than six feet. And if we have to, because of a spike, we can adjust to one of the lesser attendance patterns that we need to.
So Jim, David raised that point, the question that I was going to raise is that. The CDC guidelines and their change to, you know, backing off of six feet. Did have some, you know, fine print, some caveats. And one of them being that if your community is in, considered in like some kind of high transmission category. That you should still maintain six feet at six to twelve. So based on Montgomery County's data for, there's two, there's two primary indicators, I think, that people look at. And one is like new cases per hundred thousand that David referenced. And on that metric in Montgomery County, we are over a hundred cases per hundred thousand, which would put us in the high transmission category per, per the CDC. And our PCR positivity rates are a little over five percent right now, which puts us kind of in a moderate category. So. It's not clear cut that we're high, but at least one out of those two indicators is in the high transmission category. If I'm looking at the CDC guidelines and the way they're written. In the, in that circumstance. You would not be allowed to back off of six feet. So when we're talking about this recommendation for going to five feet. Is it going to be contingent on? Actual community data and whether or not we are in the high transmission category or not? Or is it independent of that, meaning we'll do it regardless?
I don't know how we can, on a weekly basis, measure this and then change this week and then go back the next week. I think what we're going to have to do here is. Is accept to see these recommendations and if. If the case spikes to either their, their definition of high, which is perhaps our, our state's definition of substantial. Then we're going to have to revert back to one of the other attendance options, which, because the hybrid alone. Does get us to six feet. That's what we've been doing for five months.
Right, right. So I mean, when we say adopt the CDC's guidelines, adopting the CDC's guidelines includes. Don't relax six feet if you are in the high transmission category. Which at least one of our indicators places in there, places in that category. Independent of there's another spike, we're, we're already in a high transmission category status now. So I just wanted to clarify that the recommended action you're putting on the table is. Going to be based, sort of, we would do it independent of. Where we're actually at, or we would, we would sort of fall back if we were in the high transmission category when April twelfth rolled around.
So the, the definition of community here is that the county as a whole, or we, we could narrow the numbers down to the school district? And make that calculation ourselves?
Theoretically, yes. I mean, the state has, has, from the beginning here, looked at it from the county, which has some pluses and minuses. I, I would not envision a scenario where we, I know some districts are doing this. Calculate in some fashion, our own version of, of whether we're substantial or not. We get regularly. Information from the, the county as to whether, you know, what the transmission rates are. And, and there is still some green, yellow, red coding going on and red being substantial, which I believe mirrors the CDC's high. And if that's the case, then we have to go to. Reduced attendance anyway, quite possibly a hundred percent virtual. Which we can do now. Again, it's six to twelve without a whole lot of.
The hybrid model we have in place now is in adherence with those guidelines. So even if we are in a high transmission category. The fact that we're able to maintain six feet in school puts us in. In compliance with all, with all the guidelines. So that's my, that's my point is that regardless of where, where the community is, what we have in place now. Is in compliance with the health and safety guidelines. If we relax six, the six feet. To allow five day in person. What I'm trying to understand is if that's going to be conditional. Based on where the community status is based on our data, because that's what the CDC guidelines actually state. And if it, if it is, okay, I can, I can get behind that. If it's not. And we're going to make the commitment to five day in person, no six feet regardless. Then I, I'm not really comfortable with that. Other questions for Jim? Amy? And then Zevi.
Thank you, Joe. Jim, one ask first about contact tracers. I mentioned last week that our nursing staff indicated they needed more help in this regard. I mean, certainly we'll need more help if we allow more students into our schools. Are we planning, assuming we pass this tonight, to hire more contact tracers?
I would, I would say we would make arrangements for more hourly. Yeah, of people. I mean, we're not going to hire an employee, but we can. Fulfill the need with hourly, properly trained hourly people, yes.
Okay, and that's something we can train people on fairly quickly to do the contact tracing?
Yes.
Okay, and as far as busing, assuming we pass this tonight, have we looked at the bus situation to see if we're going to need more buses? More routes? Have we been in touch with first student?
Yeah, we did speak about that today and the answer is we don't need to do any more of that. We, we don't meet necessarily six feet at all times in the buses anyway. Theoretically, frankly, what practically what happens is everyone drives. And that nearly has made people take the buses normal. Everyone has a bus route already assigned to them, even if they're virtual, they just don't take it. And so there's not a whole lot of reassigning in the system. And all the, all the safeguards will continue to happen, spaced apart in the bus, everybody faces the same way. Only siblings sit in the same seat, if you can help it, those sorts of things. But we don't anticipate needing more buses or more routes, no.
Okay, and do you anticipate schedules changing? Like, for example, my bus schedule this year, my kids get picked up twenty minutes later than they normally would have. In a normal school year. And I imagine that's because there's less kids taking the bus, so there's less stops. If more students suddenly start taking the bus, do you envision routes changing?
Yeah, so I, I would envision that you, you hit it right on the head, which is even if the route was the same, if I now have ten more stops than I previously didn't have. The bus will be later to the latest stops. And we would have to adjust that, but we're going to have to play that by year based on how many children, as Dr. Chrisfield mentioned. Are actually riding the bus. So. You know, based on our percentages right now, you could add lots of children, but if they're all driving to school, there's no impact anyway. So. After a few days, I'm sure we'll be able to figure it out. We will be able to send out adjustments, but you are correct. If lots more kids are on the bus and. You know, we have additional stops, we are going to have some amendments.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Zevi.
Okay, two questions. So one, Jim. One thing that I'm not clear on is if we do change, like if our transmission rate. Is in high. How are we going to notify families? Like, how quickly are we going to pivot? That's one thing. And then the second question was, I believe in the survey, we asked the question of. How many families are okay with going to three feet? And I don't think I saw that information.
Okay, uh, let's see, the first one, the, once again, with the good, the good news about six to twelve is we can pivot on a dime. If we need to, because everybody has the same teachers and same classes.
So like, we would notify like the day of or the date of the night before or something?
This could be, right. I mean, it's sort of like, I mean, in K to five, it's substantially more dislocating. But for example, what we just did in Lower Gwinnett, we, we needed a day to get devices home and stuff like that, but everybody has it in secondary, everybody's. Frankly, it's been, it is used to and conditioned to some sort of screen learning anyway. So that's the, that's the plus of having the model we have at secondary. It's extremely flexible and also nimble. And remind me your second question, please, Zevi. Oh, the survey. I, I don't remember that part. I don't know if anyone else has a sense of that. I'm sorry, I don't remember that part of the survey.
Zevi, I'm wondering. Essentially, if we're going to relax the six feet to allow five day in person. Are we still able to maintain three feet distancing?
I don't understand, Joe.
I mean, is, were you asking about, are we able to maintain three feet distancing?
No, I thought we asked the question in the survey. How we felt about going down to three feet? How did families feel about going, or maybe we did not include that. Maybe I'm recalling. A previous version. But I thought we asked the question of how families felt about relaxing the six feet in general.
Yeah, it was relaxing the six feet and then the implication is that you may be at like three feet distancing.
Right, right. So like, was the, so like the crux of the question is like, does, do the majority of our families feel okay with relaxing six feet? Is, is the ultimate question?
Based on the data that we, that we looked at in the data table, and it's just some rough calculations that I did at the high school as an example. Under that premise, relaxing six feet. And you could be at three feet in classrooms. Fifty-six percent of the, of the students had selected some form of in person, either hybrid or five day. So that means the, the majority, a slight majority, were okay with less than six feet. And as low as three feet in classrooms. But Jim, I guess a related question is that if we have five days in person. Are we, I was making the assumption, but I want to hear you can confirm, are we still, would we still be able to maintain three feet distancing? As mentioned in the CDC guidelines?
I believe the answer is. I believe the answer is that we don't know for sure until we know exactly how many people will be coming in five days, but three feet is, well, we know we have to maintain six at lunch. That's really the key limiting factor for us. Three feet isn't I mean, in most classrooms, I'm envisioning perhaps some some table scenarios slightly different, but that's probably the norm anyway.
Okay. Marshall, did you have a question?
No, I was just gonna ask, I know it said this is the time for questions. Will we be commenting on this as well, or is this our opportunity?
Yeah, I mean, what we can have, you can make comments now. It's going to come up. Jim is putting it forward under the superintendent's report as a motion for us to see if there's a motion and a second, and then we have, we can have comments at that point before voting. So either now or later, either one.
Oh, wait, procedurally, until we bring it up.
Okay. Other questions for Jim?
I think maybe Paul.
What's that, Jim?
I think Paul, maybe.
Oh, Paul, okay, sorry, Paul.
Okay, thank you. I'm wondering if there are any additional precautions we can take if we adopt the, so if we relax the six feet rule, is there anything else that we can do above and beyond what we've done so far that could help safeguard the health of the children and the teachers?
We're doing right now, as we discussed earlier, all the all the recommendations from asking to well, now with warmer weather outdoors, a little more often, although you can't really teach outdoors all that easily, but you, depending on your grade and subject, but certainly use the hospital-grade disinfectant, cleaning all the root, all the frequency as recommended. So I don't know of anything else we can do.
Well, Jim, we have up for vote, for consideration to vote tonight, a COVID-19 testing program for our buildings, right?
That's a good point. It's assurance testing, so it's it's not necessarily guaranteeing the these or I should say contributing to anything, but it is contributing peace of mind. So I guess that's a good, good point.
How about things like ventilation where classrooms have windows or is there anything we can do spatially to increase the number of classrooms on a temporary basis?
At this point, at this juncture, we we have no ability to hire more teachers and spread things out more. If especially if we're with basically like 40 some odd school days left, a number of which are going to be done with or used for testing anyway. So unfortunately, staffing wise, no. And like I say, with warmer weather, there's, I suppose, some potential for more ventilation, but all the things we're doing now with the mask and hygiene and that is, I think, the key.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further questions, we're going to move on to public comment. So during this public comment period, we'll hear comments on agenda items only. So anyone wishing to make a comment can use the raise hand feature in Zoom, and we'll take comments in the order that hands are raised. When your name is called, please unmute, state your name, municipality of residence, and the agenda topic for which you want to comment. Maximum of five speakers on the same topic will be allowed. Please limit your comments to three minutes, after which your mic may be muted. Note that it is the board's practice not to engage in back and forth dialogue with speakers. And with that said, I'm going to check the queue. And I see our first comment is LD. LD, you can you can begin. Katie, can you unmute LD or ID?
I am asking LD to unmute, but nothing is happening.
Okay, we're going to move to our next speaker and circle back to LD. Our next speaker on the list is Cloggy Niffen.
Hi, Cloggy Niffen. I have one child in middle school and two in high school. If I'm if I'm hearing everything correctly, it doesn't feel like we fit into the guidelines right now to even entertain going less than six feet if we are in fact in a high transmission state, you know, right now. The other comment would be when we did here on Tuesday from the CHOP doctor, he had started to state how spring break numbers are changing, they're no longer decreasing and may increase. So I guess my comment would be, why don't we stay common ground and look at maybe May switching to five day, knowing that we can do it instead of switching now and maybe having to go back to common ground as it is today. I guess I don't know why we're rushing into this to get this all in marking period four. If in fact, the sixth through 12th grade is very fluid, like Dr. Chrisfield had said, where we can change things right away. Because it seems like if you have kids in for five days, they would then have to get allocated to a gold or blue before you could switch and have everyone go back to hybrid. Obviously, if everyone goes virtual, that's a different story, but if you're, if you kind of have these different tiers, it's going to be more difficult to do that instead of doing hybrid. But again, we we don't meet the minimum of being out of a high transmission rate. And I think we we saw that with Lower Gwinnett. It sounds like that happened in school. Maybe it happened at a party outside of school, but it sounds like that transmission of COVID was actually in the school, and that was something that everyone was saying hasn't happened, and that's why back in Tuesday, people wanted to go five day. So those are my comments.
Thank you. We're going to try back to LD. LD, can you unmute? All right, we'll go to the next speaker, Jeffrey Lawrence. All right, we're going to skip Jeffrey Lawrence and move to Bev Stanton.
Sorry. Hi, this is Bev Stanton. I have a son in the high school and a son in the middle school. And I just wanted to listen, Wissahickin, the teachers, the board, you don't work for the Montgomery County Department of Health. And so if the CDC and CHOP, they're recommending, they change their recommendations and say that the kids need to be back in school because it's best for their mental health, then the kids should be back in school. If the parents are concerned that they're for spreading, then the parents have the option of keeping their kids at home. So there's no reason why the kids can't be back in school five days a week. This option for a hybrid and five days a week and virtual, you're making more out of it than you should. Have the option for either five days a week or keep it, and virtual, keep it simple. We don't need to have three levels. You're making it too complex for yourself. I was a little concerned when I heard Ron Stoloff. It sounded like he's more concerned about the teachers than he is about the students. And the teachers, they have a union to represent themselves. We need people representing our students. You know, most of what you're anticipating, it's probably not going to happen. So let's not worry about what might happen. Let's just focus on what needs to happen right now. And let's get these kids back in school. It's best for their mental health. It's best for their education. There was also a report out earlier today in the Wall Street Journal, and it, the report, it said that most of the cases that are coming into the schools, they're coming in from the teachers and not from the students. So let's take, you know, the literature that we have, the information that we have from the experts and put the kids back in school. Thank you.
Thank you. Jen Rappaport.
Hi, can you hear me? Hi, Jen Rappaport. I'm in Lower Gwinnett, and I have a son in the middle school. I was just calling, you know, to appeal to the board, just to ask if you guys can all consider, if you do vote on this this evening, if you all can consider, you know, on that survey that we took, I know it might have been a slight bit of a difference, but there were a lot more parents out there that were more interested in relaxing what we already have set up. That's what we collectively, like the majority of us, want here, I think. And I'd like you to look at those results and consider them if you do vote tonight. As far as what happens with the numbers, things are going to change and go up and down, and if it is easy, as they say, to get these kids switched around, I don't think that many people mind that. There are so many that are desperate to get back in right now. We'll make adjustments if we have to. So I just wanted to ask you all the board, please, give these kids a chance to get back in some school this year. Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you. And I think that was our last speaker for for this public comment period. Okay, and so I'm going to close out the public comment period and move on to the board president report. So I have one informational item to mention this evening. Excuse me. It's the appointment of the Wissahickin School District candidate to the MCIU Board of Directors for a three-year term from July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2024. So as you know, I've served as the Wissahickin representative on the MCIU Board, MCIU being the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit for the past three years, and my term expires on June 30th. And rather than continuing on for another term, I would like to open up the opportunity for another board member to serve. So this is something that we are going to need to vote on at an upcoming board meeting, but probably not until May or June. So right now, it's just to get this out on people's radars early. So if you have interest, you know, you have some time to consider whether or not you want to be Wissahickin's candidate on the MCIU Board. I can answer any quick questions now. Otherwise, you guys can reach out to me individually if you have more questions.
Joe, at a high level, what what does that entail?
So the MCIU Board meets once a month, and each month they do things that are not too dissimilar from what we do as board members in our home districts, like here in Wissahickin. There are board approvals needed for budgets, personnel actions, contracts, things of that nature. And you get to weigh in on some of the decision-making that happens at the county level. It's also, quite frankly, a good opportunity to meet fellow board members from other Montgomery County school districts. It's a little bit harder to do that in our virtual environment, but when we had in-person meetings, it was a nice gathering once a month to rub elbows with other board colleagues from nearby districts and just, you know, build connections and share, share information. Quite frankly, that's probably one of the the most interesting aspects of being on the MCIU Board. Beyond that, the official duties, again, are are not that dissimilar from what we do here in Wissahickin. Okay, so again, as it gets closer, I might talk to some of the board members individually to see if there are any takers on who wants to serve at the three-year term once mine expires. And I have no action items up for a vote this month. So with that, we're going to go to the superintendent report and back to Jim.
Okay, thank you. One informational item followed by two action items on the original agenda, plus one action item on the blue sheet. So we do have to vote on those three things tonight for various reasons, but first, we have a look at what what's on the agenda as prom and graduation update, which is more broadly, and things that are happening at the end of the year. And Paige did a nice job of highlighting some of those. And I'm sure Morgan would be very interested in the other ones, including the ones that he spoke of as well. So what we're going to do is we're going to have Dr. Dewan just give a short little presentation on all the things that are in the works, because I think you're going to be very impressed.
Okay, can you see my shared screen there?
Yep.
Awesome, thank you.
And when you're on mute.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So the high school team has worked tirelessly to create these opportunities for end of the year to honor some traditions for our seniors, and really a big part of that was ensuring that they would be able to adhere to all of the safety and precautions, and really made that the foundation of what they were planning while making sure to create as many in-person experiences for students as possible. So Paige did share a great deal of the joy that she felt about some of these events. So I'll go through briefly. If you have not had a chance to see the 20-slide PDF document, please be sure to check that out. Dr. Blair sent that out, I believe it was last week. So I'll highlight some things, and then I'll show an overview of all of the events, but I hope that this will Okay, let's try this again. Okay, thanks for your patience. There we go. So while that's getting getting set up there, the first thing I was going to highlight is the future celebration. I see my screen is spinning here, so hopefully you'll be able to see in just a moment, but the, and this actually started today, so if you haven't been on social media, make sure to to check out. Oh, come on, technology, not tonight. Here we go. Okay, if you have, if you, if you haven't been on social media today, make sure you take a look. This has started today. On social media, you'll see Jordan and Lindsay. They were posted earlier today, so make sure you get on social media and like the post. So every day between now and June 4th, seniors will be celebrated. Submissions were, will be featured on the Instagram page, the Facebook page, Twitter pages, so definitely make sure to check it out and and like those posts to show our seniors how much we appreciate and are excited for them. Okay, the senior day, Paige spoke about this, the senior only day. This is going to kick off Spirit Week. And and it's, it is a big, big, exciting day for all of the seniors to come in person, which I know is something that was really important to to our seniors, to be able to have a time when they could all be in person and be with one another. So there are some fun activities that are available that day. You know, students are encouraged to wear their apparel that's related to whatever their future is, that they're anticipating after high school graduation. They're encouraged to do fun things like decorate their parking spot with chalk. And and of course, they have the opportunity to be in the stadium, spending time with classmates and teachers, having fun walking around the track and enjoying frisbee perhaps. And then there's Spirit Week from May 3rd through May 7th, and each day has something fun for students to to dress up in. So make sure you check out the details of that. And then, of course, prom incredibly is going to be in person, and I know you heard this when Paige shared a little bit about the events there. But this is a big deal, and students are super excited and families are so excited because we know last year was a very different situation. So all of the details, of course, are are in the communication from Dr. Blair. But this is just remarkable that our students are going to be able to come together and be in person for this very special event at Fuge. And another important event that's going to be in person is, of course, commencement. And so this is going to be, yay, that's right, Bonnie. In person on June 10th, and and it will be, of course, monitoring distancing, of course, and mask wearing. And it will be, of course, monitoring, distancing, of course, and mask-wearing. But students are going to be given two guest tickets so that families can attend and be there to cheer on their students. So we are very excited about that. So there are just, I mean, it's incredible, the volume of events that are prepared for our seniors for end of the year. So this is the quick one-page overview with, of course, much more than I've shared this evening in my brief overview of it. But, you know, the information about the senior awards night is going to be in person and scholarship night in person. Like, that's major. And we know to have three in-person major events in June is just incredible and a lot of work for the administrative team. But they are committed to making sure that students have these special moments in person. Of course, again, monitoring and practicing the social distancing and mask-wearing, but it's just such a big deal. So again, this is the complete lineup of events and we're so excited to be able to share this. Of course, as additional details of specific events are available, Dr. Blair will communicate with families. But I just am in awe and have been in awe in looking at how much the team was able to provide for our students this year. And they took into consideration feedback from last year's experiences, which were very limited, as well as feedback this year, as families had been reaching out to share information and give their feedback and give their input, students and families, in preparation for the plans for this year. So kudos to the administrative team for all of their hard work. And thank you to all of the students and families who shared their input in helping to bring together all of these wonderful opportunities. And lastly, this is exciting news. There have been some fundraising efforts going on. And Kristen Rollins' advertising fundraising efforts have raised $1,200 and counting. And there is a high school fundraiser with a staff that raised over $1,200, which is amazing. So all of the money that's been raised is going to go directly to students who may need help with prom ticket costs. So we're so proud of these efforts and excited to be able to provide support to students who might need it. So we hope that this has been helpful. Thank you again to our administrative team and kudos for the fundraising efforts.
All right, so an exciting lineup planned. That's great. Marshall, do you have a question?
I do. Looking at the list, I see one event that is not on the list that was on last year. And that is the district-wide parade that was done, that I think was very, very popular. And I understand there was some discussion about not doing it because there are other things that have been added. But given the popularity of that event, given the fact that I think this year's seniors deserve maybe more than any other class in terms of accolade, can we add it back or ensure that it is at least considered? Because I think because of how great it was last year, how popular it was, how everyone loved it, I'm not seeing why it wouldn't be something that we could add to the list and not, you know, detracting from anything else, but having that as well.
Dr. Dewan, what do you know about that? I know there was consideration and there's difference between this year and last year.
Yes, there's, thank you. There is actually, it actually is on the list. So it wasn't one of the things that I highlighted and pulled out for a separate special slide. But on that overview list, it is listed there as the mini-car parade. So they are going to continue, or rather, again, have this parade experience for our seniors. But it will look slightly different. And one of the reasons is because last year, first of all, last year, this was the only in-person event for seniors at that time. So that's the first thing, that it was pretty massive, but it really needed to be because this was all that they had. But also, they were able to work with the local police for shutting down roads because we were in quarantine at that time. So it was much easier to sort of get the, manage that aspect of using those routes and shutting down the roads and using parking lots that were available because businesses were closed and the community was in quarantine. This year, there is going to still be a car parade, but it will be on a smaller scale. And as you saw, there were so many other opportunities for our seniors to be in person this year. But it is still on the list. It'll just be a little smaller and maybe a little different than last year.
Again, and I understand that, and I know there's a mini-car parade on there. I don't really see too much of a difference between doing what is listed and maybe doing the full-blown event. If police have told us they can't do it, I'd like to see that. If not, I'd like to see an effort to do the full-blown parade because I just don't see how it's all that much different and why. Again, I know that we're doing a lot of wonderful things, but with all the feedback we heard last year and how great it was, I can't imagine that the local authorities wouldn't work with us to try and do that. And again, I would impress upon the team to at least expand that particular event, given how popular and how wonderful it was for each and every senior. Gives them an opportunity to go through the entire school district. I don't see why they shouldn't have that again. So I'm going to keep asking about that one because I think it's important.
My daughter graduated last year and our family participated in that parade. And it was definitely a highlight, for sure. And it was way better than I imagined it was going to be. So I'm with Marshall. I think everything that we can do to try to replicate that and provide that type of experience. Even though it does seem like we have a much greater and much more expanded lineup this year for seniors, which is fantastic, I don't think that's a reason to not continue what was a fantastic event last year if we can't all do it. And Ronnie?
Yeah.
Sorry, Ronnie first, then Ron you.
I was just going to say, I thought it was terrific because it involved more of the community than just around the schools. And I think that's important. So I would like to do the whole big blown-up thing again.
Right.
And I also, I didn't have anybody graduating in the parade. I was just on the side of the street. And just to see the way the families and the cars, how they reacted, and the people on the side of the road reacted, it was, as Ronnie just said, it was a community activity, something we need more than ever in these strange times. And I think every mountain that can be moved, I think, should be moved to see that we can give this another shot this year.
What I think we can do in this regard is if the current plan for a parade that is meshed together with the victory laps, if you will, isn't of interest, what we could do is we could have, we could maybe explore an independent group planning out and executing the parade on a weekend or something. The capacity is a major issue. So I think I like the idea of the parade because it was so popular for all the reasons and for the reasons that you were speaking of. And maybe there's a way, maybe some people here or some people listening or some other people would be interested in doing all that planning and coordinating so that it happens, you know, in a way that meets everybody's expectations. We can look into that.
Yeah, and I understand that there is a parents' group who's certainly willing and wants to help. So I think if we can do an all-hands-on-deck kind of feel, get everybody involved and do it, why not?
Yeah. I think it would be a completely independent thing. So we can't, but which is fine. I mean, there's nothing wrong with that.
Regardless of who sponsors it, I think it's important.
Yeah. I don't think there's a whole lot of, there's definitely not a whole lot of money involved, if any, so that's good.
Okay. Any other comments from when you were, Jim? All right. Jim, you want to hit the action items?
Thank you. Yes. I think maybe we'll do these one at a time since they're kind of distinct and we don't usually vote at the work session. So I think we're going to, you know, because they're so important, we need to explain why. The first, I would like, please, a motion to approve Agenda Item 7B1, which is the approval to implement Project ACET, school-based COVID-19 testing for eligible in-person district staff and students per Document 7-1.
Moved.
Second.
All right, the motion has been moved and seconded. Any comments, questions for that item? Zebby?
Hi, Jim. I know we talked about this a little bit before, but I'm still not clear. This is optional, is my understanding. So how are we, are we just reporting this data directly to CHOP and/or the Department of Health? Are we going to have any information that we, the community board, will see out of this? Just wanted to get a better sense of what we will see out of this.
It is, you're right, it is voluntary. It's assurance, which is intended to assure the occupants of the building at first, that people who are there that day are not caring. So we would definitely not have it, of course, by name. We may well be able to comply. This isn't intended to, or the purpose of this isn't to share data with CHOP or the county like that. The purpose is to have us find anybody who may be positive that day and catch them before they come into the building. And we may be able to have a surface-level report on a monthly basis of how many tests we administered and how many came back positive. If you come back positive on the rapid test, remember, you immediately go for a PCR test, leave the building, go immediately for a PCR test, and you stay out of the building until that result comes back. That's the assurance of it. And we would be able to share out some information, but it would be more about, I'd say, magnitude in terms of, well, we did 200 tests this month and two came back positive or something like that.
So for the voluntary part of it, is that like you're randomly selected or do you have to raise your hand?
No, you have to choose. We cannot force people to do this. That would be a rather extensive collective bargaining matter, which I don't envision happening. I don't think that's happening anywhere unless perhaps it's something voluntary like coaching. That's a stipend position, that's different. And we do, frankly, that is where we envision it first starting anyways, in athletics. We're not sure, we're not eligible to test students yet. Anyway, you have to start with staff and then move to students later. When that time comes, maybe there's a way to make it mandatory for extracurricular things like sports. We wouldn't have the capacity to do it every student, every day, or even once a week. But in certain targeted places, I think it makes a lot of sense.
Okay, thank you.
Jim, am I reading it correctly? Is there no cost to the district for this testing program?
There's no cost for the materials. There will be hourly charges for the people who are, I think that phrase is monitoring, monitors. They don't actually do the test. This is, you know, it's a self-administered thing, but you have to watch and you have to help with the app and things like that. So there'll be some labor involved, not much.
And how rapid is the turnaround for results?
That moment, you don't leave the room until you get your result.
Oh, wow, okay.
But again, it's the antigen rapid testing, so it's
Right, right.
indicator. No action is taken on it, other than going to get the PCR one.
Got it, okay. Any other questions on the testing program?
Sorry, so a follow-up to that. So if I test positive and I'm a teacher and I'm sent for PCR, then I have to wait the 24, 40, whatever it is nowadays. I don't know what the turnaround is for PCR anymore. But you then have to wait for those results to come back before you can come back and into the building, I'm assuming. Is that a correct assumption?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. The next thing is a very exciting action. It's very unexciting in the sense that one person on this screen, Ms. Kathy Rossi, is the person making this necessary in that she's choosing to retire at the end of this school year in June. And so we will celebrate her service to the community and the students and the staff as the time comes closer to the time. And we'll also meet personally and welcome Danielle Hay to be her successor. Danielle, as the board knows, the board met the candidate in an executive session last time. And she's going to be a terrific fit for us. I feel very, very fortunate that she rose to the top of this application process. She has experience. She's personable. She's known in her current district as somebody who is very firm, but also very fair and compassionate, which I think is exactly what we have Ms. Rossi and is exactly what you want in a successful HR director. So with that, I would like, please, a motion to approve Item 7B2 per Document 7-2.
Moved.
Okay. All right, the motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Good, thank you. And like I say, we'll have the opportunity to welcome Danielle here more towards June. She'll be on the screen or maybe, you know, however we do meetings. And she'll have a little bit of overlap with Kathy before Kathy departs.
Great.
The third item is on the blue sheet addition. It's Item 7B3, which is related to our conversation previously about moving to a five-day construct in grades six to 12. So there's a motion there that has some words there. I need to change one of the phrases. So I'm going to read the motion with the change noted before I ask for it to be moved and seconded. So the item is 7B3, and it reads as follows. "Motion to authorize a modification to the Wissahicken School District's Continuity of Education/Health and Safety Plan effective April 12, 2021, to deliver five days per week of in-person instruction for students in grade six to 12." And now, for a moment, I'm going to take out the phrase, replacing the current hybrid model because that's not accurate. That phrase is replaced with, "plus the current hybrid attendance option, reducing the required distancing between students in accordance with the revised CDC guidelines dated March 19, 2021, and continuing the option for students to participate in fully remote or virtual instruction with requirement that either educational model selection cannot be changed for the remainder of the 2021 school year." And that's the end of that motion. I will ask for that to be moved and seconded, and then we can certainly discuss the details.
All right, do I have a, do I have a motion?
Joe moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion has been moved and seconded. Questions, comments? Marshall, I remember you had some.
I do. This is not a vote to take lightly. This is really important to the district. And I think this is why we took some time on this, including, most importantly, I think, doing the survey to put our finger on the pulse of what our district wants. And having reviewed this survey, it appears clear that a lot of people have an interest in moving away from the virtual option and having at least some in-person option, if not five-day. It's no secret that in the fall, I wasn't thrilled about moving into school because I didn't think we had the data at that point or we were sure if we could follow the CDC guidelines. But months of practice have shown us that, for the most part, it does appear to work. There are hiccups along the way, but we have, for the most part, done a great job. And I think based on what we're seeing in this survey, based along with the CDC guidelines, which we're going to be following, and the fact that it's really what the district wants, along with the fact that I've spoken with students who want an opportunity to come back. Specifically, I know we've talked about that making the switch now, it's at the end of the year, may only be for a few weeks, may only be for a certain amount of days. For those people, it really doesn't matter, whether it's one day or 10 or 20 or 40. They want the opportunity to get back, and I don't think we can ignore that at this point. So based on the totality of the circumstances... So based on the totality of the circumstances, I do think it's time that we get them back into school if they want the option. Everybody has an option if they'd like to choose it. But I think we deserve an opportunity to try. And the survey tells us one thing more than any other is that, as a community, we understand the issue, we understand the potential risk. But as a community, I think we also have a responsibility to look out for one another. And more importantly, I think what it's going to do is it's going to ensure that we get the kids in understanding that we don't want to move backwards. So I think everybody is going to be hyper vigilant in this to ensure that our kids can go back, have a wonderful end to the school year, gives us practice for the fall, it gives us an end to the seniors who deserve it so much. And I think it's the way to go at this point. So to my fellow board members, I think it's time we go back. And I think we do what's in the best interests of our students, our staff, and our teachers and get the kids in.
Amy, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I absolutely agree with Marshall. I think our students need to be back in school. We do know at this point what we need to do to get them in safely. Our students at this point have been practicing good social distancing. They've been wearing masks. We encourage hand washing, use a hand sanitizer. We've been doing all the right things. And I think at this point, it is time to get our students back for those families that choose to go back. And so I agree, I think we need to vote in favor of getting them back.
Paul?
I have, mine is a question. I'm still a little unclear as to how we react to the CDC guidance regarding the level of instances within a community. Is there any way we can get some clarification on that? And what criteria we'll use and what the bar will be if anything changes in terms of outbreaks?
What I do, yes, the answer is yes, Paul. That's a good point. I know it's also on the mind of other board members. One of the difficulties we have here is that the CDC's guidance is out, and it uses a phrase that we don't have in our state yet, in our county. It calls high transmission. Now, you can look at the numbers and suppose that it's the same as our substantial. But I don't know that we can necessarily presume that right now without letting Pennsylvania and Montgomery County tell us what that means. So what I'll do is I'll continue to ask and beg for some clarity locally and at the state level. And I'll dig out, or as soon as they share with us how we're going to implement that here, how we're going to interpret that here, I will share with everybody the resulting data. We need some clarity. Is it the county? Is it the community, meaning like the townships? If it's Ambler, is it all of Ambler or just our section of Ambler? There's some, I would, that's why we've been going with the county because then all those things go away. But if it's not county anymore, if it's community, then we have to do something different. And we'll stand ready to do that calculation. And I think what we should do is, much like we do with the dashboard, with the weekly update on the counts, I think we should add a place where, once we get the answer, we portray where we are transmission-wise. I don't want to be as simple as like green, yellow, red. But we need to have the words consistent with what we're reading in CDC. And once we'll do that, we'll definitely share it out with the whole community once a week, whenever we get the updated data.
Other questions or comments?
It's Zebby. Jim, I like that recommendation. And I think it would be important that we communicate and understand what those thresholds are. I too echo a lot of the sentiment that Marshall kind of opened up. This has been a rough year for everybody. But the last few weeks have been even more so kind of debating on this. But I hear that, I hear the community. And I hear the community wants the five days a week as an option. So thank you for kind of evolving with us and with our community to put this forward.
My, I don't have a question, I have a comment. And my comment on this is that the language of the motion is to adopt the CDC's guidelines. And the CDC's guidelines specify that at six to 12, if you are in a high-transmission community, then you should not relax six feet. The sense I get, though, is that the sentiment from at least a handful of board members, as well as, you know, the survey results, seem to indicate that that isn't really a concern, that people want five-day in-person with relaxed six feet for their own reasons, whatever reasons they have for it. But for me, I look at the, what's the guidance? We've been following the Montgomery County Department of Health the entire year. I understand switching to look at the CDC because they're probably where Montgomery County is going to end up, maybe in a week or two shortly. But if we're going to follow the CDC guidelines, to me, we should be following the CDC guidelines. And I understand that there might be a groundswell of public support that doesn't really care about that. And maybe we prioritize some other factors in wanting to have in-person with less than six feet. But for me personally, because I'm concerned that this is not about following the CDC guidelines specifically, but more doing what we believe maybe a large number, possibly a majority of the community wants, that's not something that I personally am comfortable with going with because I want my decision to be grounded in what the health guidance is specifically and not just, you know, kind of generally. So for me, as stated and as how I believe it's going to be implemented, I'm going to vote no on this. But each board member is welcome to make their own decision. We're nine individuals on the board, and in the end, it's the majority that rules the day. And I'm cool with that. David?
Thanks. I would agree that if we're going to follow the CDC's guidance, that we should stick with their numbers. And if we're at those numbers, we need to be prepared to, you know, in short order, take remedial action, if that means closing the schools. And it seems to me quite likely that that is going to be triggered despite what some commenters believe. And in addition, it's going to be rather disruptive, I think. And we've heard from other community members that have said as much to go away from the hybrid. So the students that are, want to go to school are in school, in fact. It's not five days a week, but it's a couple of days a week, and they are in school. And I certainly empathize with those who want to be in five days a week. But I don't think now is the right time to do it, and I will be voting against it also.
Any other comments? Okay, Katie, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote, please.
You got it. Mr. Badger?
I vote in favor.
Mr. Bleefeld?
I vote in favor.
Mr. Frank?
I'm against.
Mrs. Ginsburg?
I vote in favor.
Mrs. Heyman?
I vote in favor.
Ms. Carrie Nigus?
In favor.
Mr. Stoloff?
Aye.
Mr. Antonio?
No.
Five, yes, and three, no.
I think it was, was it three now?
Mr. Frank, Mr. Stoloff, and Mr. Antonio?
Oh, I said aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said nine. I'm sorry. Six and two.
Six and two. Motion passes.
All right, and thank you. We'll get these plans in place, and I will make a priority of clarifying the words and getting the data shared out in a way that, to the whole community on a regular basis, probably adjacent to our dashboard. We'll figure that out.
One quick question, just for clarifying purposes. I'm assuming that because of how the survey was written previously that we actually need to do another survey confirming what people are going to do. So people, our community needs to look out for that survey and completed as to how we're going to move forward.
Yeah, that's right. What we're going to do is tomorrow, we need people to tell us, grade six to 12, if they want to do the five-day option, or if they want to do the hybrid attendance option, or if they wanted to 100% virtual option. And then we need time to not only reclassify students so we have our safety down for, you know, attendance things, but we also may need time to relocate furniture, get the necessary ranges back in the buildings, which conveniently happens to be next week as recess. So we will definitely get that out to all families in six to 12 this week, most likely tomorrow.
Great. And just to maybe reiterate in the email that they need to complete it, just because we probably inundated them with text messages to get the survey complete that they might not understand they need to do it again.
Okay. Jim, that wraps up your report, I believe, right?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, then we're going to go to the Assistant Superintendent Report. Minnie, wait.
Thank you. I have no informational items and no action items this evening.
Okay, Board Solicitor Report. Yep?
I believe that there is a confidential settlement agreement that has been remitted to the board for consideration that I believe has been reviewed with the board.
That's correct.
And are we going to be taking action tonight, or are we going to be deferring that till?
Next week.
Next week.
Next week, okay.
Yes.
And that concludes my report.
Okay. Thanks, Jeff. Then we're going to move to the Board Secretary Report. Wade?
Thank you. There's no informational item, and we'll present for next meeting, budget meeting, work session, and regular public meeting minutes for approval.
All right. Wade, could you continue with the Treasurer Report?
Thank you. There's no informational item. And at the next meeting, we'll be requesting approval of the Treasurer's Report for February 28th per document 11-1. Thank you.
All right. Any questions or comments for Wade on either the Secretary Report or the Treasurer Report? All right, we're going to move to the Personnel Report. Kathy?
Yes, thank you, Joe. Just one item of information. Today was the final day of the MCIU Vaccination Clinic. And I just wanted to say that it was just a really well-run process through the MCIU. And they deserve lots of kudos for the work that they did to accomplish what they did. And we had approximately 700 staff, faculty, administrators, contracted employees, including our food service and first student employees vaccinated. All who wanted to be vaccinated were vaccinated or will be vaccinated by nine o'clock this evening. So I'm really proud of that and happy for our staff that we could help with that process. In addition, I'll be requesting approval of the action items on document 12-1. As you can see, there are some retirement resignations and other appointments. Anything that gets changed or added will be in bold for next week.
Okay, any questions for Kathy? Ron?
Question, yes. Kathy, approximately, what percentage of our staff has been volunteered to be inoculated? Do you have that number?
Jim, do you have that number? I forget what it was.
Yes, not necessarily through this program, but through one way or another, it's about 88% approximately.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy, I just wanted to say thank you for that coordination. I'm sure it was a really large task and a really important one. And thank you for all that effort.
Thank you. Very rewarding, for sure.
I bet. I bet.
All right. Communications Committee Report. Zebby?
Sure. Katie, can you project the slides with our COVID numbers, please? I need to enlarge my view. Okay, great. So these are COVID cases that are positive, that are not on campus. And I guess that's the kind of clarifying point here because if I'm understanding correctly, Jim, Katie, correct me if I'm wrong, because Lower Gwinnett is closed, that's why those numbers are appearing as zero because we're kind of restarting the clock, if you will. So Lower Gwinnett, even though it's closed because of its cases, is now showing up on this report as zero. Is that correct?
I think these are the virtual students.
Is it just the virtual students? Sorry, Katie, like, we went back and forth, and I'm still very confused. I feel like this has changed from the previous versions.
So the not-on-campus table includes any student or staff who was not in the building during the 48-hour contagious period. So both this table and then the 14-day rolle are both on the website dashboard. 14-day rolle appears first, and then if you scroll down a little bit farther, you'll see the not-on-campus. They're two different data sets.
So not-on-campus means they weren't on campus when they tested positive or within the 48-hour period? It doesn't mean they're virtual students and/or staff?
Correct.
Okay, so I feel like that's a little different than what we had seen in the past or am I mixing that up?
We've had different kind of versions of this throughout the school year. But I think since the 14-day rolle piece came out, we've been using this model. We've looked at other models from other school districts and kind of take bits and pieces and see how we can leverage good ideas across the county.
So on the website, when we have the kind of bubbles, in the first part, we have total numbers. So that's our total numbers with virtual and in-person. And this is just the people who are coming into the building within that 48-hour period, and that's the difference. Is that correct?
Correct. So the first bubble, the first large bubble that has, I think, 17 cases in it right now, those are the on-campus 14-day rolle cases that we have. And then the second large bubble that you see that has a number upwards of 200s, that's a running total since the first day of school.
Okay. All right, I still feel like this is a little confusing, but that just might be me. Let's look at the rolling 14-day. Okay, so here we have the 14 and the red with the Lower Gwinnett. But it looks like all of our other buildings are still tracking in the green status. And this is, again, just in-person cases for those buildings. So a total of 17. All right, any questions? I feel like I might have confused folks with questions, so I apologize for that. Okay, I have no other items for tonight.
Ron, did you have a question?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Have we been able to trace where these people were exposed? Was it a party? Was it mostly staff or mostly students? Or do we not know?
Are you referring to Lower Gwinnett, Ron?
Yes, that would be right.
I don't know, Jim, if we have that.
Yes and no, we are able to. The contact tracing has to do with not so much where, necessarily where it came from, but who you have been in contact with, so we, you limit the spread. It's going to be, it's going to be really hard to say, well, you got COVID from here and you got it from over there. It's possible to say that that event spread it. And there are events that are taking place that are countywide, necessarily us, but there are private events. There are actually, unfortunately, sporting events are one of the main culprits. the main culprits. And it could happen in school as well, which is what happened to us here because so many kids in the same class had it, and also staff. I would disagree with one of the former speakers or the speakers who said that it's primarily, or it's staff that does the transmitting. Not necessarily true. It could be. And adults have it, students have it. Students might do the transmitting, just not show up symptomatic, which is the trick, because then it's hard to tell that they have it, which is why the CDC, for example, continues to have adult distancing be six. Even though the elementary school is now three feet, the CDC is clear about adults, it must remain a six. So it's an inexact science as to find out where you, at one, actually got it from. You can be pretty sure sometimes, and sometimes you have to take a guess based on those circumstances.
Katie, I had a question. So I also am confused sometimes by the tracker. And today, parents did reach out to me about there were zeros appearing for Lower Gwinnett. I guess when zeros were not supposed to be, they shouldn't have been appearing because we had positive cases there. So how does the tracker work? Can you explain it for us so that parents listening, to better educate us more about how that tracker exactly works?
Sure. So the 14-day rolling period works looking at historically 14 days or 13 days back in the current day, and it rolls forward. So as new cases, as new days roll forward, cases that are beyond the 14-day start to fall off. When you get to a school closure period, your clock resets. Anything that was recorded, if we have cases that appear during the school closure period, they will end up on the Not on Campus table because nobody is in the building. So we can still have cases, they're still recorded, they're just on that second table below. But Lower Gwinnett will go to zero, which is what we saw this morning. And I put them back up when we heard some of those comments, to have them there. But anything, when school reopens on the fifth, everything will be at zero for Lower Gwinnett again, and everything else with the other schools will continue to move forward.
Okay. And then I did have one other question. I don't know if it really relates to the tracker, but I have been getting a lot of questions from parents about the week after spring break, what our plan is. Are we going to be open? Are we going to be closing for the week, assuming people are going to travel? So is there any idea yet what our plan is?
We have no plans to close the week after spring break. It could happen, but I mean, no plans to do it. We're not going to do it preemptively, let's put it that way.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anything else for Zepi? Okay, then we're going to move on to the Curriculum Technology Committee Report. Ronnie, you're on mute.
Sorry. I have no items. Dr. Dewan, do you have anything to report?
Yes. On the agenda, there are two action items. You can hear me right? Two action items. One is the summer programs approval. So to review this, I have a very, very brief presentation to share with you. Your Document 14-1 gives a synopsis as an Excel file overview, but my presentation this evening will sort of walk through what the changes are for this summer when compared to last summer. So you should be seeing my shared screen here, and I'll just walk through very briefly at the elementary level and see how I changed my plan here so we don't have technical difficulties. So at the elementary level, all three of the elementary programs will continue to run. One significant difference is you'll see in 2020 and in prior years, there was a summer reading academy, and the focus was reading only. This summer, we're referring to it as the Elementary Summer Academy, and the focus will be on reading, writing, and mathematics. We're also going to embed some encore experiences in the summer day as well. You can see, the numbers that are listed here are the numbers of students who are being invited to the program. So I wanted to make sure that the numbers I shared were parallel. So the numbers from 2020 are the number of students who were invited, not the number of students who attended. I'd be happy to share with you an update once the summer programs are in effect, and we can compare number of students who are in attendance this year compared to in attendance last year, but I didn't want to muddy the water. But you can see, 110 students were invited last year, and 280 are going to be invited this year. So we are really expanding the number of seats at the elementary level for our students, as well as expanding the content for students in the program. Our English Language Development Program will be pretty consistent, and that is because students who are invited to that program are eligible based on criteria for being in the English Language Program, and that specific criteria just coincidentally keeps us at the same approximate numbers as last summer at the elementary level. And then the Kids Program, which is Kids Investigating and Discovering in Summer, which is for incoming kindergarteners, last summer's number of invitations was 36, and this summer, we're anticipating inviting 48 students. So we're trying to expand that as well. At the middle school, our middle school program, you can see last year, 60 students were invited. This year, 70 students will be invited. One of the things that we're doing is expanding the number of seats for students who are rising sixth graders, so that's students who are leaving fifth grade and entering sixth grade next year. We're also hoping to coordinate an opportunity to provide some mental health support groups for students who are in rising grades seventh and eighth this year. For our high school programs, you'll see, we've got a lot going on here. The Credit Recovery Program will continue as it has in the past. Our Camp for Success Pre Teaching Academy will continue as well for students who have not yet taken coursework to provide them with opportunities for preparing them for the upcoming school year and the courses for those future courses that they'll be taking. So there are specific qualifying criteria for each of these programs. Of course, the Keystone Remediation Course program will continue. You can see that number of students will be expanding there. And then the Camp for Success for the ACT and SAT test prep program will continue. New for this year is the Re Teaching Academy for students this summer. So this is new. It's for students who have already taken and passed coursework, but they've passed it at a level at which we see that they really need to have an opportunity to review material in that coursework to better prepare them for successive courses moving forward in their educational career there. And again, we're looking to work with having mental health support groups for students in high school as well. And finally, our special education programs, which are K-12, you'll see, numbers are increasing for students who are eligible. Again, just as with the English Language Development Program, students in our ESY Program, which is Extended School Year, have to be eligible based on criteria from the Pennsylvania Chapter 14 Code, as well as the IEP teams coming together to look at student data, to identify students who are determined to be eligible for the ESY Program. But these are the numbers you can see have increased due to eligibility for students in the program. So this is just, like I said, a brief overview to share with you some of the changes from 2020 to 2021. One of the things that you can't see, for example, in some of the programs where the numbers are consistent from last year to this year in terms of inviting students, one of the things you can't see is that there are many more efforts that, especially at the secondary level, that the administrative team and team members, counselors, are working really hard to increase student attendance in those programs. And that's where it'll be interesting to look at attendance compared to attendance, once we're into the summer programs, because they're really pulling out all of the stops, working so hard to have students to commit to attending the summer programs this year. So where you see the numbers are consistent in terms of invitations, what we're hoping is the numbers will be significantly different, fingers crossed, with students who actually accept and attend in those programs. And then, of course, you see some of the big changes with the number of seats and invitations that are being provided, particularly at the elementary level where we see a significant need as it relates to our COVID slide efforts. So I hope that was helpful. Any questions on that?
Zepi and Amy. Zepi, first?
Thank you for sharing. That was incredibly helpful and incredibly encouraging to see. Thank you for that. My key question is, how do students know they're going to be invited? And how early are those invitations going on, going out? Are we giving the students and the families sufficient amount of time to kind of plan for that? I know, especially in the K through five, most parents already have done their summer camp situations because you kind of have to. So just want to make sure that those who are indeed eligible and are invited can kind of make the appropriate accommodations for it. Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, thank you for the question. While I can't speak to every single program and invitations for every precise program, right now, I can tell you specifically at the elementary level, which is one that you brought up, that we targeted the parent-teacher conferences to share those invitations with students. So that was our target. So last week, families would have been informed of eligibility for being invited to the summer programs, because, you know, we definitely are very much aware of the competing factors with summer vacation. Thank you.
Yes, thank you also for all that information, Dr. Dewan. My question is about the Mental Health Program. I'm very concerned about our students' mental health, given this past year. So the program we're having this summer, it's set for qualifying students. How exactly do students qualify for that? How are we making them aware of its availability? What sort of resources will be available for students at that program?
Thank you for your question. So we're working out all of those details. I know that Dr. Heim McCloskey is working with the secondary administrators, and I know the counselors are involved as well to think about, how are we identifying those students? I mean, they are more informed of who the students are to be able to make recommendations for who would benefit from those opportunities this summer. I know that Dr. Heim McCloskey is working on identifying available services through the Alderstake opportunity. So she's working diligently with the secondary team on those very details so that we can have some offerings for students, particularly at the secondary level, because we are very much aware and share the concerns with many of you here about our students' mental health and well-being. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to go to the Facilities Transportation Committee Report. Wade, can you do the honors in Tracy's absence?
Yes, thank you. We're going to be presenting for approval a donation of $40,000 from the Stony Creek Home and School Association, and sort of concurrently, an approval to purchase, not to exceed $66,000 worth of playground equipment, including shipping installation. So the Home and School Association contacted us, and they are interested in increasing the play opportunities. It's a great opportunity for us to have more inclusive ADA-type equipment, so we're excited to partner with them. There's going to be a supporting document that isn't included now because some of the details are still being put together. But in addition to these costs, there's going to be an additional $48,000 worth of site work, which also has to be done. So the commitment from the board would be the difference between the 66 and the 40, and then in addition to that, another $48,000. So that's what the board would be, you know, making commitment for, with the offset being the $40,000 from the Stony Creek Home and School. I'll also include in that document all the play equipment that the Home and School Association has selected.
Great. Any other questions about that item for Wade? All right, then we're going to move on to the Finance Committee Report. David?
Thanks, Joe. On the agenda, there are no informational items, but we did have a meeting last Tuesday, March 16th, of the Finance Committee, and went over another round of budget discussions concerning topics of special education, that a presentation from Dr. Heim McCloskey about staffing levels and student numbers, and various aspects, especially Ed. We talked briefly about expansion of the summer program that Dr. Dewan just mentioned. Very encouraging to see what we're doing there. There was a discussion of the North Monco Technical Career Center budget, which has broken favorably for us, based on initial projections as to Wissahickens contribution this year. We're going to be paying less, so saving some money there. There was a short discussion of student transportation. The Wissahickens Valley Public Library budget came up. There'd be asking for a 3.5% increase to pay the debt that they have associated with the Ambler renovation that they made at the site there. That will amount to something like $2 per year for the average Wissahickens taxpayer. And that's pretty much what we covered. Oh, also, there was a short discussion of North Monco Center's refinancing of some debt that they have currently as a bond issue, which they're going to be getting a low-interest rate loan to replace that. And I think Wissahickens is going to save over $30,000 for that. That's all the information items. And then we have some action items to consider, the financial reports, approval of a list of payments. We'll be asking for approval of a settlement order on an assessment appeal. That's item number 16B3. 16B4, we're asking for approval with Fox Rothschild to continue as our solicitor. 16B5 is approval to waive stadium usage fees for the American Cancer Society Relay for Life, which has been hosted off and on at Wissahickens Stadium for the past few years. And I'll let Wade touch on that in a moment. And also, in that same item, is the Quanis Club requests to waive fees for their Ambler Carnival and fireworks. And then finally, there is, item 16B6, we'll be requesting approval of a resolution to approve the North Monco's Center refinancing. Wade, would you talk about item number 16B2, which is the proposed budget?
Thank you. Yes. Each year, thank you very much. We approve a proposed final budget, and then that needs to be advertised, posted. We'll send it to the library and each one of the schools. It'll be available as well at the administration, and we'll post it on the website. And at that point, then, the public has the ability to review it, although we've already had it available. But from a technical standpoint, that's what we do. And then 30 days need to occur before we can pass the final budget. Our plan is to pass the final budget at the beginning of June. At this point in time, we do have a balanced budget with a 2.9%, 99% tax increase. Between now and June, we can change it all the way from 0 to 2.99. And, you know, we expect lots of changes between now and June, but this just sort of sets the public aware of what we're doing.
All right. Any questions, comments for Wade or David? All right. And again, we'll be voting on all those items next week. We're going to move now to the Policy Committee Report. Marshall?
Thank you, Joe. It's the real reason everybody tuned in.
Thank you, Joe. It's the real reason everybody tuned in tonight, the policy committee report.
Been waiting for it.
I know. Get ready. I have no informational items. I do want to remind everybody that the fun continues tomorrow night with our policy committee meeting at seven o'clock, where we will discuss the second half of the two hundred series of the policy. And we do have some action items tonight. They are the reviewed changes from the work session on May March twenty second that will be asking for a vote on April fifth. And that's action items B one through twenty three. Other than that, I'm finished. Thank you.
Questions, comments for Marshall?
Marshall, why do you have the most items?
Because it's the best committee.
I'm just teasing. I'm paying attention.
No, it's funny about.
For sure.
Breathe it in, enjoy it.
Quality matters.
All right. So we're going to move on to the report of board representatives. Tracy is not here this evening. The M C I U Board of Directors is meeting, having a monthly meeting Wednesday, so I'll provide an update at next week's meeting on what transpired. Ron, anything to report with the M C I U Legislative Committee?
Yes, there are many items to because of the lateness of the hour and because of the repetitive nature of many of them. First, to start off with good news, the stimulus package, it was passed in the Congress a couple of weeks ago. School districts throughout the state will be getting some funds to make up for some of the expenditures we made. For instance, the computers we had to buy. And there are there have been some bills introduced in the state legislature to try to fix the cyber charter situation. But unfortunately, because of the general hostility of the legislature, mainly because of some rather aggressive lobbying, these don't have too much of a chance to pass, but give you some idea of what they're trying to do. One is that if a school district has this has its own cyber charter school, that if a parent chooses to send their student to a private charter school, then it will be on them, not the school district to set to pay for that. A a cap on the amount of money that the school district would have to pay the charter, not based on what the school district spends per student, but what the charter school actually needs to spend on their on the students that it has with a cap of ninety five hundred dollars. And also to have charter schools report to a state agency rather than just doing what they they will. And it's it's a very difficult process to get this done. And it's unlikely that there will be any movement until there's some major changes in the state legislature. And that'll be it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. North Monco Technical Career Center, Ronnie or David?
All right. One of the things at the last meeting, the director says that they are trying to re densify their classrooms because they have seniors who need to get hours on equipment and improve their skills in order to go on to do further work. So they today, actually, the seniors came back five mornings a week. And then they're trying to get everybody else in slowly, but surely. I think that's it.
Redensify. That's it. That's a new one.
I wrote it down. That's why I know. Re densifying classrooms.
All right, cool. P S B A liaison, Zepi?
I was not able to attend last week.
Okay. Board Racial Equity Oversight Committee, Paul?
No new information and no items for vote.
Okay, so that takes us then to the second public comment period of the evening where we'll hear comments on any school related topic. Anyone wishing to make a comment can use the raise hand feature in Zoom. And the rules are the same as our first public comment period. Again, when your name is called, please unmute, state your name, municipality of residence and your topic. We'll take a maximum of five speakers on the same topic. Please limit your comments to three minutes. And it is the board's practice not to engage in back and forth dialogue with speakers. So I'm going to take a look to see if we have any hands raised. I don't see any. I'll give it another couple of seconds. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to move on to board comments. Any comments from my fellow board members? Zepi?
So I'm on a completely unrelated topic that we talked about tonight, but I was walking around my neighborhood yesterday with my dog and I saw multiple driveways a whistling note to that driveway to whoever belongs to that driveway. I actually saw a few Facebook posts about it as well. And I thought that was so nice to see and refreshing and probably a nice touch. I think it's mostly high schoolers, but nonetheless, I thought that was a really positive thing to see in my community, directly in my neighborhood. And thank you for the team who did that because that that took some extra effort to have it happen.
Yes, it was the whistling team at the high school that did the chalk messages for all ninth graders. I happen to know because I have twin boys who are ninth graders in the high school and we had a big pretty impressive chalk drawing on our driveway as well. So that was that was great. And I agree, a nice a nice positive activity, a nice feel good thing for all of our ninth grade students for sure. Anyone else? Amy?
I just wanted to circle back to something from earlier, going back to the parade that we talked about earlier for our seniors. Just as we were sitting here during the meeting, I've been contacted by parents reaching out to me indicating they are willing to work on organizing this. So we definitely have some senior parents who are willing to organize this. And I think we should definitely look into doing the parade. I I totally agree. Last year, that was amazing. My kids and I went to it. It was an awesome experience. I think we definitely need to have it again this year. And if parents are willing to work on it, I think that they we should work with them to have that parade again this year.
I think that is a tremendous idea. I think it would actually be so much, not so much work with them as as hand over the reins to them for the parade. And it sounds like there's a lot of good ideas that make it work great. So all good.
Ron, do you have something?
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate the board, congratulate the board for for following the the science at this point. And let's let us reopen the schools to the extent that they can be with what we have to be vigilant. We've seen what happened in Lower Gwinnett and we don't want that to happen to any of the other schools. And we will expect when the schools are more opened with more rather have more of the students in in the school that the students, there's a tremendous responsibility, it's going to be placed on their shoulders. That when they are walking in the halls, when they're at lunch, even when they go to the bathroom, they're going to have to be very careful to follow the regulations, to keep the masks on, to wash their hands, the whole the whole deal, so that we can finish the school year in a healthy state so that we can start the new year off with a very happy note. And I would hope that it works out. Those of you who are skeptical, I was skeptical about the elementary school when we first started off, and I've been astounded how well it played out this year. And I have no reason at this point to think any differently that for the general population of our students, the middle and the high school students, I think we'll be able to pull it off again. Thank you.
Any other board member comments? Student board reps, any final words for the evening? Okay. Seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Meeting adjourned.